... session. Their second?
Second.
Their second by Vice Mayor Monica Garcia. Any objections? See, none so move. This point, I'd love to like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting. Today is March the 16th, 2016 at 7:00 PM. So I will ask Pastor Jackson to lead us in an invocation, followed by the flag salute. I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this time. Thank you. Good evening.
Down you, Paul Flores was here.
Oh, I didn't see him. Wow, that's okay.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you right now in the name of the Lord. We thank you for your word. You said, "There are many plans in a man's heart, but only that that you have established will stand." And so there are plans for Baldwin Park with the city council and the mayor and the police department, but you have your hand on Baldwin Park. We're in some perilous times within our nation, around the world, and we're asking you, just touch this nation, Lord. We are in a political arena right now to elect a president, and we need your wisdom and guidance in whom to elect for president. So we're asking you, put your hand up on our school. Put your hands up on our children. Put your hand up on our businesses. Put your hand up on the police department, the fire department, and all of those that are working to make this city great. And we ask these things in the name of the Lord, we pray in that.
Amen. Thank you. At this point, we're gonna pledge to the flag. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to say good evening to everyone that's here. So I'm not sure if council members have any wish to close on anyone's behalf. Is council member Cruz Baca?
Not on anybody's behalf, but I do have a little bit of an announcement. And tomorrow is the Baldwin Park Women's Club Annual Scholarship Dinner. And it starts at 4 o'clock. The tickets are $25, and it's at the Baldwin Park Women's Club Clubhouse. The tickets are, the scholarship fund is to give away the scholarships that we give to our students from Baldwin Park High School and Sierra Vista and North Park. It goes to a really worthy cause. It's a really nice dinner. It's a Salisbury steak, mashed potatoes that a lot of the club members cook themselves. So please try to make or to give a donation would be great as well. Like I said, the tickets are $25, and it is tomorrow at 4 o'clock, and wear green. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you. Yes, council member Susan Rubio.
Since you're finishing your paperwork, I just wanted to invite everyone to our Easter hunt. It's coming up. It's on March 26th at 10:00 AM at Morgan Parks. If you have children, family, friends, invite them over. We also have the art, it's called the canvases, et cetera, collection, starting from March 14th to May 28th. So let's support the arts next door. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, first of all, acknowledge Maria Moreno who's here covering for Manny Carrillo. Today's Manny's birthday, turn 50.
Yeah.
I thought he was younger than me, but I want to wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday to Manny, yes.
Yes.
Mayor, I also want to acknowledge the Baldwin Park Unified School District had a film festival, and we had two students that won. The first place was Santiago Sanchez from Sierra Vista High School.
Right on.
Yes. And the other one was Kevin Parra, second place from Baldwin Park High School. And these are really talented. If you have a chance to ever attend that festival, I know Phil, you do, you were there. It's a wonderful event, and to see that some of our young people may be the next Spielberg's. It's phenomenal. It was very exciting. So congratulations to both of them. I would like to invite them to come and be recognized by the council in a future council meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for acknowledging these individuals. All right, at this point, council members have any? If not, I will ask our city treasurer, Maria Contreras, for the roll call.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Buenos dias a todos. Council member Cruz Baca?
Here.
Council member Susan Rubio?
Present.
Council member Ricardo Pacheco? Mayor Pro Tem Monica Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. Thank you very much.
Welcome, everybody. I just feel so happy to be here.
Yeah, the time changed so.
We're happy to have you, Maria.
Me too.
Absolutely. All righty. Okay, so at this point, we have a couple of presentations. The first one that we have... The first presentation that we have is the proclamation to proclaim March 21st, 26th of 2016 as Adult Education Week. Do we have anyone from the adult center here? Oh, we do. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and just read this, and we'll go ahead and present it to you. Read the Adult and Community Education Week, March 21st, 26th of 2016. For March 20, well, our state will observe California Adult Education Week. The Board of Education of the Baldwin Park Unified School District acknowledges that our Baldwin Park Adult and Community Education Program is an integral component of California's educational system, and California Public Adult Education Programs serve local, state, and national interests in providing lifelong education opportunities and services to all adults. These opportunities and services address the unique need of individuals and communities by providing adults with the knowledge and skills necessary to participate effectively as productive citizens, workers, family members, and consumers of goods and services. The Baldwin Park Unified School District Adult and Education Program provides learning opportunities to adults in parenting, family literacy, elementary, and secondary basic skills, ESL. Citizenship programs for adults with disabilities, short-term high unemployment potential career technical education programs and classes for older adults. During the week of March 21st, 26th, local, state, and national organizations will sponsor activities designed to increase public awareness of how residents can benefit from local adult school programs and services. So just want to thank the Baldwin Park Unified School District, more specifically B-Paces, as it plays a major role, integral role, with so many people, not only from Baldwin Park, but through the region as well. And it's acknowledged for the high level of teachers that provide the various type of trainings there. So I want to thank you very much, and please also extend that to all the B-Paces, Dr. Kerr, and all the teachers. So if you want to come up here and we'll...
Mayor, while she's coming up, and correct me if I'm wrong. I know that every year they have the Older Education Week. You know what adult education means to me, and you know, I've been there many years, and sometimes it's in the morning, so we can't go, or at least I can't go because I teach. But it's really incredible to see how they tell their stories, and they're so proud of the work they do. I mean, we always get the essays, but it's nice to see them read out loud. And so if anybody wants to attend to support them, it's March 23rd on Wednesday at the PAC Center, 10:00 AM, so please go join them. And like I said, they're so excited to share their stories, so please come and watch.
All right. Yes, come on up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Can you have it? Come on up here.
Get as close as you can, please.
Sure. Here, congratulations. Okay, you know what? Come on, come on, come on closer.
Take a picture, so she can... Okay, thank you.
Which camera first? Which camera? Okay, let's go over here. Go ahead. Okay, let's try one. We're gonna try.
There you go. One more time, one more time. Ready? Okay.
Okay, let's go with the... We'll go with the center camera.
Okay, ready?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Do you want to share some words?
Yes.
Here, come on up.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'd like to thank the city of Baldwin Park. And I am Elizabeth Morales. I'm the library technician, also a chapter president for our organization through the California Council for Adult Education. And Baldwin Park Adult School has gone through great strengths to be able to provide a quality education to our community. And we really focus on having our students succeed and really fight for, advocate for our adult education programs. So we do invite you to join us on Wednesday of March 23rd at 10:00 AM to come see the stories of our students, and any encouraging and supporting faces would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's at the PAC Center on Main Street, correct?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. All right, at this point, we're going to, oh, we're going to presentation, San Gabriel Valley. This presentation is by David Diaz. Good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council, city staff in Baldwin Park. Thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to present today. We're actually gonna be talking about open streets or ciclovias. So my name is David Diaz. I'm the programs director for Bike San Gabriel Valley, the local bicycle coalition here in the San Gabriel Valley. So what are open streets? Open streets are free public events. They're temporary or partial closures for motor vehicles. Open streets are for physical activity, wellbeing, recreation, walking, scooting, biking. Those popularized in Bogota, Colombia. So they actually closed down 80 kilometers of streets every Sunday from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And now it's had some momentum and success here throughout our region. The first major open street event in Southern California was in 2010 with Ciclavia. And then in 2003, they actually shut down the Royal Seco closure and allowed people to bike that route. So given that you guys are a let's move healthy city, seems like a nice little fit. And so it's an opportunity really for folks to get to explore new neighborhoods. A lot of times when we're driving, we're stuck in cars. We're not really paying attention to our surroundings. So this really gives people an opportunity to slow down and really check out what's around them, their surroundings by walking, biking, skating. So playing in the streets, free classes are offered, zumba, yoga, other physical activity courses. There's live music, so people can dance and move around. It's really a community-led process where people are to participate. This is just a section of the street where you put chalk out, and people start decorating and creating their own art out in the streets. Community boost and healthy living, again, it's a big emphasis in our communities here in the San Gabriel Valley. We know that we have issues as it relates to air quality, childhood obesity, and several other things. So it's important to push the healthy living message. These are some of the features that I found at an open street event. So you know, you could put a petting zoo. You can highlight local business. What they've shown is that these open street events actually, businesses along the route experience a boost in sales in comparison to the Sunday before. So again, it's good for local business because these events typically attract anywhere from 35,000 to 80,000 people throughout the day. So it's really a good opportunity to invite people throughout the region. And in addition, you guys happen to be planning some bicycle infrastructure that folks might not be familiar with. You can also have temporary demonstrations where they get to experience what a protected bicycle path, what some other amenities might look like, so that they can be like, oh, okay, I know what this looks like. So these days are really opportunities to activate the streets and present them in different ways for the community. And so some of the upcoming funding opportunities. Metro is expected to release cycle two of funding for this program. Council endorsement is needed to continue trying to search for this funding. And because they're so amazing events, they really take a lot of planning. So if Baldwin Park was interested in pursuing an open street event, now would be the time to do so. And the other thing is that because the San Gabriel Valley cities are smaller than, you know, LA City, Long Beach, it's more competitive if you partner with other cities. So in this case, it'd be La Puente, Erwendale, El Monte, cities like that, that the city may consider partnering with. And then also another recommendation is to combine the open streets with an existing event that we know that you guys already have going on. So for example, the 5K that you guys do annually, it'd be great to add a 5K plus an open street event that would continue to allow people to recreate in the streets in a healthy manner. So the long-term goal is that we can have our version of what they have in Bogota, Colombia by maybe not making it monthly or weekly, but on an annual basis, we're providing people with an opportunity to experience the streets in a different way. And so with that being said, we're actually producing 626 Golden Streets, which is gonna be the largest or longest open streets in the entire United States. It's approximately 17 miles, where it's gonna take you from the cities of South Pasadena all the way out to Azusa, incorporating cities such as San Marino, Arcadia, Monrovia, Erwendale, Duarte, and unincorporated parts of LA County to celebrate the opening of the Gold Line. And as you see, we have some events listed, in case you guys are curious and want to go check it out for yourself and see what it's like. The next one's actually this weekend, and it's called Beach Streets in downtown Long Beach. And then the one closest to us, that's Azunis, is the one that's Downey, Ride in Stride Open Streets. So we can send you this information with the slide, so that you guys have all these dates available. And as you see, our event, there's a flyer that we passed out. It's called 626 Golden Streets, and that's gonna happen on June 26th. So walk, run, skate, bike, and explore 626. It's gonna link Six-Foot Hill Gold Line Station, seven San Gabriel Valley cities, from South Pasadena to Azusa on June 26th. First time it's ever been done, so we're super excited, and we'd really like to invite all of you, the city of Baldwin Park, and your friends and family to participate in the day of. And with that, that ends my presentation.
All right, at this point, anyone have any questions? I personally think this is an awesome opportunity, you know, to really expand. And of course, I like what you mentioned about the 5K, because it's very popular, maybe somehow, and maybe incorporate this, so.
Yeah, one of the things that we're doing for 626 Golden Streets is that we're having a train run right before.
Oh, wow.
And the people that register, our partner, Azuton Athletics, is using it as a benefit run. So if groups decide to sign on to the train run, 20% of the proceeds go back to that club or to that nonprofit group, so that they can benefit from it.
Wow, that's great. Thank you. Good job. Anyone else have any questions?
We were just discussing, you know, all the benefits that, you know, bike riding brings. So thank you for doing that. I know that council members in other communities, and Long Beach in particular, and they're talking about how exciting they are about the project. So I just would love to see it, you know, more often in our communities, here, particularly in Baldwin Park. So thank you. We appreciate you coming and making the presentation. I definitely support it. Thank you.
All right, yes, at this point, yes, CEO.
Yes, if the council would like, we can look at partnering with Bike SGV and some neighboring cities to apply for the grant for this type of event next summer.
I would love the opportunity to participate. I know that it's, I mean, going back, I think, 10 years from council member Marlon Garcia, the mayor, and everyone that's pretty active here, we've been wanting to be part of that. And so, yeah, I would definitely encourage us to join if everyone's okay with it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, council vice mayor.
I love the idea, and I think it would be great if we could invite Almani, Erwendale, Azusa to join in, because those are the cities that, you know, if you connect them, there are several train stations. And so, you know, I love how you said, you know, you can kind of put some kind of practice runs of what it would feel like for cyclists to have, you know, their bike lanes. And so along those lines, it'd be nice for our cyclists to be able to get on a bike and then access the trains if they're going into downtown or, you know, so that it encourages that lifestyle.
Right, right. Connecting people and places, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a beautiful thing about these type of events.
Mayor.
Yes, council member Cruz Baca.
Yes, thank you. You know, I, along with council member Rubio, attended the opening of Gold Line from Duarte all the way to Azusa, Monrovia all the way to Azusa. And it was great, because I envisioned, you know, we could, it's very easy for cyclists to go, especially from point A to point B, if they want to ride their bike, like they do in a lot of cities, especially in Santa Monica, I'm very familiar with. The one thing that I do want us to look into is I noticed that in some of the cities, they have like a green or a green bicycle that tells you where to the bike lane, so that people can see it better. And I think we should look into something, getting a grant, oh, to Dan or to you, Shannon, to see about getting a grant to be able to sort of put either a green line or a bicycle or something like some of the other cities have to distinguish that.
Dan has already obtained some grants and is working on those projects. He might be able to elaborate a little more if you'd like.
Yes, the first project that you will see that incorporates separated bike lanes that have a different color than the rest of the street will be Main Avenue Complete Streets Project. We have the funding for that. That's in design right now, almost completed with design. We're also initiating, we've gotten grant award for Frazier Street, which is also going to have dedicated bicycle lanes that will be in a contrasting color with the rest of the street. Those will be protected bicycle lanes to keep, you know.
I would like to ask one more question. Were you, did you participate or help in any way Long Beach get the Bike Share program?
So funny story about that. I was actually on one of the technical advisory committees. I was voting on these proposals. So in a way, yeah, I was able to, you know, vote on how good of a project it was, but I wasn't directly involved with it. But the person that runs that Bike Share is actually one of our friends or partners that teaches league-certified instructor bike safety classes throughout LA County region, so.
You know, and I know that's very popular, like in European countries and just other places. I'd like to invite maybe, so we can reach out to them, just to hear a presentation of, you know, programs funding available and how we go about it, just to hear what it's all about. If you can get together with our CEO and then figure out how to put a presentation together for us. You're saying he's your friend, correct?
Yeah, so one of the interesting opportunities that recently came up, Metro and the council of governments here for the San Gabriel Valley has put together a presentation or an opportunity for groups of cities within the San Gabriel Valley to apply to the Active Transportation Program for a feasibility study of the region and what a Bike Share program would look like. So expanding the program that they have in downtown LA into compatibility with all the other San Gabriel Valley cities, the idea being that the Bike Share in Pomona won't be different from the one in downtown LA. And if we can kind of connect those cities, you can one day, on a Bike Share program, get from Pomona all the way to downtown LA. So I can follow up with Shannon and send him some more information.
Yeah, please, Shannon. Can you do that? Thank you. Appreciate it.
If I may, council member Rubio. Shannon today signed a letter of intent for the city to become involved in a Bike Share program, the one that's being described right now.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any other questions? Thank you. Excellent. Looking forward.
And then lastly, I mean, congratulations on the award and being able to put together Complete Streets Project. These projects are very important, and they need to be highlighted and celebrated. So if, when that comes a reality, like, we would love to come and bring some press and really some positivity to projects like that, because they're much needed in this region. So I look forward to helping you guys celebrate this awesome accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also gonna leave some of these flyers in the back, in case anybody care to get one.
Thank Wes as well. David?
Thank Wes, because I see him at a lot of the events.
Okay, I'll be sure to say hi to him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, we don't have any other further presentations. We'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted, I wanted to add one thing before the speakers start. I wanted to thanks down for the job fair that they did this past week. So it was very well-attended. I saw the pictures and it looks really good. So congratulations to have, I have a real bad cold, so I can't talk too much, but thank you.
All right, at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately five minutes.
No, three minutes.
What did I say?
Five.
Oh, okay, three minutes. Thank you very much.
John Rios, resident. One of the things that I've been noticing, especially starting, what, December, that the city council is going the opposite way like it used to be with the both Garcias and the mayor, okay? They're going to the dark side. That's what we call it, you know? No matter what the other city councils vote, you will be at savings of 5,000. That's what, you know, the other three will put them down, okay? I think it's time for the mayor to, as we're saying in Spanish, "Put your pantalones on." Okay? Because he's getting to the point that not only myself, but the residents have been noticing all that, you know? Just like, what was it, a month ago, that you guys fired all the commissioners? For what reason? Just because somebody didn't fill, fell off to it? That's not right. You guys are serving us, okay? And, you know, we're not serving you. We voted you in. So it's voted, people. They're talking about what can we do? There's a lot of things we can do, okay? Don't be surprised when we come back, okay? Because the people are getting upset with everything that's going on. Just because a lot of people don't come in, doesn't mean that they don't, you know, I'll go back, or Mr. Luna, which is not here, he's still sick, you know? But we all go back to our communities and talk about it. We'll go to the Morgan Park, talk to the senior citizens right there and everything. But it's time for those three individuals need to open up and see what you guys are doing wrong, okay? One of the things that people want to know what really is gonna have to happen for us to do something, okay? So we're talking to certain individuals, okay? And another thing on your code of conduct. As elected officials, you guys cannot call us names. Cannot call us liars. Everything that we bring to the city council, they're facts, public record facts, okay? So it's time for you, as mayor.
Mr. Rios, your three minutes are up.
There we go, those three minutes.
I thank you very much. At this point, moving on with your public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? You okay, chief?
Good evening, Mayor Lozano. Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, council members, city staff, and the community of Baldwin Park. My name is Daniel Levanos, and I am from One Legacy Donate Life. One Legacy is an OPO organ procurement organization. We are the bridge that connects the patients to the transplant centers. One individual can save the lives of eight people through organ donation and enhance the lives of 50 others through tissue and eye donation. Currently, our national number of patients waiting on the gift, waiting for the gift of life is over 123,000 men, women, and children. Currently, 22,000 in our state alone. Sadly, we lose 22 patients daily waiting for the gift of life, and every 10 minutes, someone is added to this list. Approximately 81 organ transplants take place every day in the United States. That's more than 29,000 people who begin a new life each year. More than 1 million tissue transplants performed each year, and the surgical need for tissue has been steadily rising. Cornea transplants, meanwhile, restored a site to 50,000 people each year. One Legacy has partnered with the Red Cross and the Department of Motor Vehicles to encourage others to register on the state donors registry list. Another way to register is to go to our website, www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, en si habla Espanol, www.donavitaCalifornia.org. Together, we have signed up over 12.9 million future donors. Donate Life has a couple events coming up. Our first event was our 13th Annual Donate Life Rose Parade float, which was successful in getting our message out to the public. Treasure Life's Journey won the Isabella Coleman Trophy for Best Color and Harmony in Floor Presentation. Riding on Treasure Life's Journey were 60 florist honorees who gave the gift of life and 24 float riders consisting of organ, eye, and tissue recipients. And walking alongside Treasure Life's Journey float were 12 living donors, showing you that you can still live a productive life after transplantation. They did walk 5.3 miles. Our civic leaders on December 29th, 2015th, were among many others placing dedicated roses on our rose garden jewels. That night, thousands of dedications were placed that evening, with 3,500 total dedications in all. Our second event is coming up this April 30th, 2016. Donate Life Run 14th Annual 5K, 1K Run Walk at the Cal State University Fullerton Campus. In the past few years, this event has attracted over 12,000 participants. And the mayor of Fullerton, Mayor Jennifer Fitzgerald, has a friendly challenge to all mayors and civic leaders to participate in this year's event and invite your community to participate with you. We have a marathon packet that explains our Run Walk and how to secure your city proclamation. I had dropped that off last week. And for our DMV Donate Life California campaign, April is donor awareness month. I am a liver transplant recipient. I received my gift of life on December 27th of 2003, the greatest gift I ever received from a stranger. Thank you, Mayor Lozano, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, council members, city staff, and the community of Baldwin Park for giving me this opportunity to announce One Legacy's mission in saving lives through eye, organ, and tissue donation come first to families we serve and inspires our communities to donate life. Thank you very much.
Do you have information on One Legacy that you could leave here?
I have a pamphlet for the Run Walk. I have a pamphlet for the run walk. It's a registration.
Could you give it to our city clerk?
I also have some extra pamphlets, too.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mayor, I have some comments if I may. Last time I expressed my support, I'm, you know, actually registered as a donor as well, and I want to encourage everyone else to do so. I know that, and I think I discussed it last time, one of the unintended consequences of, of this immigration, you know, undocumented, being able to get licenses, that so many of them registered to donate. And so when I consider all those registers, new registers, mostly are Spanish speaking, so I want to ask the council to consider putting some type of little article on our monthly newsletter, I'm sorry, our Baldwin Park Now, where we can explain to them the benefits of donating organs and so they could understand. I mean, this is a good population we could reach out to and I think it would be wise to educate them on the benefits, you know, and encourage them to register as a donor. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
All right, moving on with public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. Just this week, this is Fax Tribune newspaper, three councilmembers, Lozano, Garcia, and Pacheco tried to silence me, tried to put restraining orders on me that would affect my business, reflect everything that I do for Baldwin Park, and also restrict gun usage and everything else against me. They did this out of a hate crime. They did this out of no facts, they did this out of lying. And the, you weren't there, Mayor, because you didn't want to show up. But the other two that showed up swore under the penalty of perjury everything they said. And he did that for a reason, so I want you two to think about that when we send the lawsuits out for you. There's six coming. Now, I want to tell everybody, I want this hands down. You have the right to speak to these councilpeople any way you want in front of the council. Now, I must agree, I don't condone cussing, swearing, or any of that, but I will tell you the facts, I will tell you when you're not doing a good job, I will tell you that you're a honey or that you're a political prostitute and you'll get over it. That's the way it's going to be, Monica, so get over it. Pacheco, I told you that I'd have you in handcuffs by the end of the year? I will do that, buddy. I keep my promises. Now, as far as the comments, we're going to, through the next few council meetings, read the very stupid comments that were made by the three councilmembers of drive-by signs in my truck stressing the mayor out and Monica claiming I stalk her house. It's the least amount of, it's the least person I would stalk in my life. Pacheco wanting to say that I would go to a Walmart and threaten his life and then he had his wife lie for him on top of it. It was all a joke, but we want you all to hear it on the facts of what they wrote under the declaration of perjury. We went in the court, the commissioner had already made his mind up within 10 minutes that this was a joke. You people were out for hate and let me tell you something, you only pissed me off worse. You didn't help any matters and I'm coming on full bore. I've already made my reservations for the next two conferences. I will sign up to be at the conferences inside and there's not a thing you can do about it. So if you don't want to show, I'm giving you advance notice so, Manny, you don't have to pay your $475 back to the city. I am going to be an advocate to come in here. I will be turning in people to the IRS like you people did to me, Mark Seer, and a few other people during the redevelopment years. So we all got, I had never had an IRS audit in my life, but when you connect with your kind of people, that's the dirty tricks you pull. So guess what? It's all coming your way now.
Mr. Tuttle, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Appreciate that. Okay, move along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, my name is Veronica Tomas. I'm a resident of Belmonte, California. I'm also a community activist and I myself have been a victim of politically motivated restraining orders, ridiculous frivolous. And it's just amazing what I've seen in Baldwin Park. I mean, we have Lozano going after Paul Cook saying he's fearful of his life. We have Pacheco, Garcia, Lozano going after Greg Tuttle saying they're scared for their lives. What else did we have? Oh, your buddies Royal Coaches going after another activist with a restraining order. Do you guys realize what restraining orders are for? You know, there are people that actually need restraining orders, but you are clogging up the court system because of politically motivated, you want to silence activists and quite frankly, that's, that's not right. And I'm going to help my friends in Baldwin Park, of course, so I don't know if you're going to get a restraining order on me too, but I intend to help them. So I would appreciate it if you would look into that more, maybe talk to other people and who have restraining orders, who have been victims of violence, and see the abuse that you put in the court system by filing frivolous restraining orders against activists who dare to speak up against you. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Moving on with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? I've now, I now declare the public communication closed. All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and go into the closed session. So we're going to go ahead and, oh, before, consent calendar, sorry about that. All righty. So at this point, we're going to go into consent of calendars. We have items one through 10.
Mayor, I'd like to pull number four.
Number four. Okay, any councilmembers want to pull any other items? If not, at this point, I will make a motion to pass consent calendars with the exception of item number four. Second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, we'll go to item number four, which reads Authorization to Rescind Bus Purchase Agreement with Creative Bus Sales. Vice Mayor Monica Garcia.
Thank you. I just wanted to get a little more information on this item.
Sure. We had jumped the gun a little bit and had authorized a purchase prior to the granting agency allowing us to make that purchase. So we have rescinded the previous purchase and you'll see Agenda Item Five is making the purchase so that the dates are correct.
When you say that we jumped the gun, what do you mean?
Well, so the granting agency had given us the money, but they hadn't authorized the purchase yet. So it was, it's, this is to correct, it's a paperwork correction.
Okay, all right. Thank you, so moved to approve.
I second.
Okay, second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to the public hearing, which is the, we're going to, actually nine, 11, excuse me? Yeah, 11, we're going to move to the following meeting, so, and that's the introduction of an ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to set forth the implementation of developmental impact fees for law enforcement facilities, vehicles, and equipment. So that will be for the following meeting. All right, so then we'll go over to item number 12, which is a review of current applicants. So I wouldn't do at this point.
Further with it only because I recognize that Mark Ramos is here from USCW and we're supporting their cause and we just wanted to.
Thank you.
Share that the resolution has been passed and thank you for your efforts, for your work and everything you do. We stand with, you know, our families and hopefully this will help, you know, your cause, thank you, and our cause as well because, you know, we fight together. Thank you.
And also Sylvia, Sylvia Carr.
Sylvia, I'm so sorry. Thank you for joining us tonight, thank you.
And also, and also real fast, that the Relay for Life, even though it was in the rain, was very successful. The ribs were great. It was worth the walk.
Yes, thank you.
Si se puede, thank you. All righty. Okay, so at this point, we'll go to item number 12. You know what, want to just do the planning commissioners at this time and then bring the rest back? So, yeah, we'll continue, we'll continue. Yes, oh, yes, I want to, sorry, thank you. I want to, at this point, we're going to continue and extend the rest of the commissions. So for the planning commission, first one I'd like to place in there, let me see, resolution entitled, are we, for office number one, is that what I'm doing? Yeah, office number one, place Kevin Patrick Rooney. That is my motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? Yes.
I would like to put Mr. Ken Woods.
All right, there's a motion by.
Position number two.
I'll second it.
Second, any objections?
Yes.
Okay, one objection, Madam City Clerk, roll call. All right, so this is.
Councilmember Chris Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Monica Garcia?
No.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? Mayor Manuel Lozano?
No, okay, the actual motion dies, the actual vote is at three, two. All right, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion for Edwin Borkus for item, for number two. That is my motion. Second, any objections?
Yes.
See none, so, okay, one objection, Madam City Clerk, at this point, for the objection. There's an objection, so at this point, the motion is for.
Councilmember Chris Baca?
No.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Manuel Lozano, Mayor?
Okay, yes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Mario, I'm sorry, for Mario Marcel?
A second.
Okay, any objections? All right, so that one's it.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Joanna Valenzuela.
I second.
Who?
Joanna Valenzuela.
All right, is there, okay, there's a, there's a motion for Joanna Valenzuela and a second, yes.
Is that for the planning commission or Rec. Parks?
Planning commission, this is all for planning commission. Okay, so there's a motion right now on the floor for Joanna Valenzuela.
Second.
Is there's a second, any objections?
I'll object.
Okay, one objection, Madam City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Susan Rubio? Councilmember Chris Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? I'm sorry, it was Mayor Pretend Monica Garcia?
No.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
No. Okay, so the motion is three, two. At this point, I'd like.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for David Muse?
All second. Any objections? See none, so move. Is that five?
That's four.
Four. Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a motion for Christopher.
Wait, hold on there. That was Kevin Rooney, Edwin Borkus, David Muse, Mario Marcel, okay, there's one more.
And one more, so Christopher, yes.
I'd like to see if we can have a woman on the planning commission and there was a woman that served in the last, I want to say up through 2013. She, I don't know, she applied and I would like to, I'd like to hold off on making that appointment until we can look at, you know, other candidates because I'd really like to see at least one woman on this commission.
We do have a woman that was on there. Joanna Valenzuela was very successful as being a planning commissioner. She's a young Latina woman that, I, can I please?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. We have Joanna Valenzuela. What I'm trying to say is there was, she is a woman, from what I understand, a Latina woman. She was doing a great job. She, she knows her city, grew up here in Baldwin Park, attended our schools here, is very passionate about our community. She was removed without cause and I want to know, I want to see why she is not qualified enough to be on this particular planning commission this, this time around.
Mayor, if I may, Deanna Robles, should, would you guys consider her?
Well, you know, can we just hold off on the fifth?
Okay, that's fine.
And there's already a vote on Ms. Valenzuela, so.
I know there is, but I needed to have an, I needed for the record an explanation. If I would be allowed that, that would be great.
Okay, at this point, does anyone have an explanation? Okay, if not, there's no explanation. I mean.
We vote for things so quickly lately that half the time we have to repeat what's going on so that we will know what to, how to vote. This particular dismissal of 21 councilmembers was done so.
Commissioners.
Pardon me? I'm sorry, commissioners, was done so quickly, before we could even blink, they were out the door. I need, on my behalf and for my own satisfaction, be able to explain to our community, those that are listening, the audio, and those that are sitting in the audience, my dissatisfaction of what happened. That is all.
Okay, and I'll ask if you could provide me information, when you got elected, knew nothing about the politics internally, how you removed the executive level, we're talking about record that I've never seen before, including all the commissioners. So if you could explain that to me so I could explain to them and the community that's been waiting for that since you've been in office.
I think you're confused. I think it was Ricardo who made the motions.
Okay, so let's get back, so I could get that and then we'll provide you with information. But at this point, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco? Yes?
I didn't hear a second.
Yes, I did, I seconded.
So my motion is just to hold the fifth.
A second. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and hold off and there's been a second, any objections? And not, all right, so at this point, we'll move on then.
Okay, so we'll bring the rest of the commissions to the next one.
Mayor, as a point of clarification, you have appointed four and you're only waiting on one, right?
Yes, that is correct. All right, thank you very much. All right, this point, we'll go over to item 13, which is a mid-year budget presentation. Rose, how are you? All righty.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you the mid-year budget review and year-end projection for fiscal year 2015 and 16. The projections for general fund revenue for June 30 is based on all the revenues we have received as of January 31, 2016. And we projected the total revenue by June 30 will be 26,458,865, an increase of $37,470 compared to the original adopted budget. Please feel free if you have any questions regarding any items listed above.
All right, well, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
The franchise fees, I know you've explained this before, well, the previous finance director, but could you please refresh my memory? The franchise fees come from, is waste management part of the franchise fees?
Yes.
And what, is that just solely waste management? The.
No, it also include other company.
Yeah, there's a couple other utilities that are included in there. I believe it's Southern California Edison, one of the water companies, the trash franchise, and I think the gas company make up the bulk of that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, they are, yeah, they are.
Yeah, thank you, and Royal Coaches.
All right, so at this, does anyone else have any questions?
On this slide? If not, I move to the next slide.
That's fine, go ahead.
Okay. The total general fund expenditures projection for June 30, 2016 would be 26,453,389 dollars, with a slight increase for 120,557 compared to the original adopted budget. And please feel free with, if you have any questions regarding any live items listed above, I will be more than happy to answer that.
All right, councilmembers have any questions?
What, what, what was the increase? Because I see that the Parks and Recreation Community Services was 2,537,185 dollars. What, what, where and why was there an increase? was $2,537,185. What, where and why was there an increase?
Oh, actually, the Recreation and Community Service, they are in line with the original adopted budget based on the projection for the last seven months. So if there is an increase, it will be on the last column or decrease.
So if you see the increase under administration, the most part of that is some contractual services, and also part of that is some litigation that the city participated in with Irwindale regarding the Olive Pit, and also some anticipated litigation on the Murph, and also some litigation regarding Eastern Keystone. These are estimates, and we're trying to project how much may be spent and plan for how much may be spent for the remainder of the year. We're being very conservative. We don't think we'll spend those amounts. And if so, that money then will be left over at the end of the year, but we do want to make an honest projection.
Oh, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone?
So then, the cities, we have a, we're in the positive about $120,000. Is that your projection at this point?
Yes, it will be the next slide.
Okay, let's see the next slide.
The overall general fund performance overview will be, we projected a surplus with $5,476. It is much better than it was expected with all the new labor agreements.
Pretty marginal, huh?
Yes. But with the CAFR and the year-end that we have performed, we projected the fund balance will be 8.3 million, and it's not in this slide, and I have it put it with the CAFR presentation. And there's an increase of two points, over two point million increase compared to prior year. It's not in this slide, but I have handed, I have provided handout to everybody that you can take a look at that.
And I just wanted to reiterate, these are estimates for the rest of the year. You know, we're being very conservative. If everything goes, we may finish with a small deficit at the end of the year. Compared to the entire budget, it's barely .3%. So that could go either way. Revenues could increase, and staff is gonna do what they can to tighten our belts and reduce any spending so that we can finish the year hopefully with a surplus.
And also, I thank you very much, Rose and your staff, and I know all the directors and everyone that helped put all this together. I know it's a lot of work. But I also want to bring to the attention that there has been a lot of savings on a lot of the different contracts that the Berkshire Group worked on. There are a lot of grants that we're coming up with, not only in the police department, but also Parks and Recreation, Public Works, all the grants that are coming together to help with the landscaping and everything else that happens within our city. And so thank you very much, because I know that's a lot of work, to be on schedule and meet the deadlines and everything else. So thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I think you guys are doing a good job, and it shows that the city is working hard to spend its money wisely. We have a lot of good staff supporting that despite the comments that come from the public of what devastation the city's going into. We're bankrupt, but it's not true, as you can see from our information here. I think we're doing great, and I hope we continue to move forward in the future. I know that a lot of our departments work very hard. Public Works this past year has done a number of new streets. I know we spend millions of dollars rehabbing our streets, or still working and upgrading a lot of streets. I talked to a lot of residents, and they're very happy. They see all these new improvements, and they see them going forward. A lot of people want to get the island medians done, so hopefully we could start that. I know we have a plan in place, it just takes time to implement it. Parks and Rec Department's done a great job with all their programs and events that they have every year. And our PD, of course, is always working very hard. A lot of emphasis on new equipment, remodeling a lot of the offices, a lot of upgrades for morale and for our police officers, and also for our labor negotiations. I think we did very well. This last year, making sure that they all got great benefits. So I'll continue more next week, because my voice is dying out. Thank you.
I would also like to provide the City Council with some revenue ideas.
Yeah, and if I could just interject there, Rose, just so the council knows, there's a memo that the E-Team has been working on. This is sort of a summary of possible revenues, but there's a memo that details some other revenues in detail that the E-Team is pursuing and looking further into. Go ahead, Rose, thank you.
All righty.
Yeah, and thank you. And the one thing that we need to remember, though, is that even though it may look like we're doing well, we have to be frugal. And I keep repeating, the workshop that I attended, the State Controller, Betty Yee, she said for us to, all city elected officials, to be very careful how they spent their money, because there could be a recession that would hit us hard in 2017 after the election.
You may find one of the revenue and options for revenue enhancement. I have mentioned some ideas with the trust fund, with CalPERS. You will find it in your memo detailing all those revenues that listed on this slide. And there are about two pages of the details how we are going to pursue these revenues.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, no questions. Well, I just want to add the reasons I don't have all these questions, you know. I want to thank you for serving with us on the, I'm sorry, on the committee. And you do come after hours and we stay late. We do have a committee that we attend to on a quarterly basis as much as we can. And so we've been sort of digging in the budget and looking at every line very carefully. So thank you and all the committee for joining us every quarter. Thank you.
Yes, I also provide some information that you request regarding the GASP. And also, and finally, I would like to acknowledge the Honorable Mayor and City Council on their effort to achieve a balanced budget and to take the time to stay current on its status. And we also want to thank all the department heads and their staff. This year's current budget would not be in a positive position without their hard work, dedication, and commitment. Thank you again.
I just wanted to add one more thing. I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. You want to, go ahead?
No, go ahead.
I thought you were gonna close it. I just want to add one more thing. And I know during our committees, budget committees, we, a lot of questions come up about PERS and GASP. As soon as you see any changes, just make sure to send us a message, so we're always on top of the changes. You know, we don't always get to look at those little details. And I know there's a lot of laws that come in and come out and change so rapidly. So just, you know, make sure you send us an email, you know, let us know. Thank you.
I will include them in the weekly memo.
Thank you.
Yes. And also, I will create a link and post it under the Finance Department on the city's website.
And if I could, Mayor, I just wanted to point out this one slide, and this is information from the CAFR, the city's financial report and the review of last year. And I just wanted to show this slide because it does show that the general fund balance is healthy and is moving in the right direction. And so I just wanted to show that, because that is good news.
Fantastic, okay. I just want to also, and by just thanking you, Rose, as well, phenomenal job, short time. And the fact that we're able to give all the various entities the raises, obviously, better compensation, and we still have a surplus. So that really says a lot of the good condition, the financial situation that we're within the city of Baldwin Park. So thank you very much.
Yes.
All righty.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I want to thank Rose and your staff also for preparing this. It's very thorough. I really like the suggestions. It's very proactive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're on this topic, I did want to ask about the audit and the most, you know, if you can give us an update at the next council meeting regarding the auditing firm. Because I saw in an article that the auditing firm that we hired for our city was let go in the city of Pasadena. So I just want to make sure, you know, that we're aware of, like, any reports that they've been providing to us. What is the status of the audit and, you know, the auditing company that we contracted with? I'd like to just get an update.
Yeah, we can get back to you on that.
At the next, at the next meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item number 14 that we have here. Do we want to skip this to the following meeting?
I think so.
Yeah, let's go, that's the, for the officers, the different-
I'll second your motion.
Should we just take it up? I mean, it's eight o'clock.
Yeah, let's, huh? Let's bring it to the next one, next week. So, I mean, the following meeting, all right? That's my motion.
Oh, Mayor, I would just say if the Audit Committee could become-
I'll second.
The, okay. No objections. All right, no objections. All right, thank you. But go ahead.
Item 14 is with the appointments of alternates represented?
Yeah. Would, you want to go through it now, or do you want to?
No, I just wanted that, is the Audit Committee on this one? No, okay, never mind.
I'm sorry. Actually, it is there, because this includes all of the formal committees that the City Council sits on, like Foothill Transit. But you can also consider, if you very, look at the very last page of that, we've got a list of all the committees that-
No, I was just- I just wanted the Audit Committee to be the whole City Council-
Yes, absolutely.
And not just two individuals, because I think it's an important item that everybody should be informed of and make sure that we all-
I agree. I agree. I agree 100%. And I've also invited at times, some, like Margarita Vargas from the Water Board. I've included, invited many people from other committees within the city of Baldwin Park, church organizations, anyone that would like to attend, I welcome, we welcome them. So I think this is great. I think it's a great idea.
Appreciate you.
Mayor, the only thing I would suggest, because they take like four hours to go through the budget line by line, you know, so it cannot be part of the meeting, because we'll never get out of here. It has to be on a special, special meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. Then we're doing-
I'll second.
And the objections, seen on some move. All right, so that's clear on that particular subject. All right, item 15, which is the CDBG grant. So let's go through the grant. So Susan, Melissia, please.
Mayor, can we hold that off for the next meeting? I still want to go through the grant.
You know what?
A deadline on this?
Well- We actually, we are required to publish it for 30 days, and that means that I have to have it published before April 4th.
That's fine, yeah.
And so we won't make it for the next meeting in April.
All right, so let's go ahead and go.
Go ahead then.
We can always make changes at the last meeting, if you prefer.
All right, so let's put it up there. The first one that we have is the, first one is the Church of the Redeemer Food Bank. Am I correct?
Well, Mayor, can I make a motion if you disagree, that we could go ahead just for the interest of time? Because I know that the committee that normally sits on this committee, I mean, I know the hours and hours that they spend, if everyone's okay, I'd just like to make a motion to leave it as is.
I second.
Well, you know what?
Unless you want to change it, okay.
Yeah, I want to check, because I got, let's look at a couple of things here.
Well, can we take a vote then?
Yes, so at this point, Madam City Clerk, there's a motion on the floor and a second to pass the actual initiative here per the recommendation by the-
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
I'm sorry, can you clarify the vote?
Okay, the vote, the vote, right now, there's a first and a second to pass as this.
Also, yes.
So at this point, you're saying yes. Go ahead.
Councilmember Chris Baca?
Yes.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
No, I'd like to review it, no, I'm more friendly.
Mayor Pretend Monica Garcia?
No, I'd like to review it as well.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
No. So at this point, it's at three, two. So at this point, let's start out with the beginning. So is the first one the Church of the Redeemer? That's what I'm seeing here?
Yes.
All right, so the recommendation- Excuse me?
Can we see the organization?
Okay, well, look at on page, on page 15, it's the second page. That's where I'm at. So A, is that the current recommendation by the committee, 8,000? Well, am I reading this right or wrong?
Column A is the current allocation. Column B is the requested allocation.
Okay.
Column C is the recommendation of the joint commission. You do see some small reductions because our CDBG funding is being cut annually.
Well, you know what, here, here's a, go ahead.
And just, just keep in mind, the total of 141,583 cannot change. So if you give more to one group, you have to take away from another.
Right, right. And that's, well, you know what, why don't we make them at least, I mean, what is it? By 100 bucks off, the 8,000, that's what they got last, actually, they received, you actually donated $1,000. So they got 9,000 last year. Let's up that. So, let me see. Family Service Center, can we at least get 1,000 from there? Let's do that.
But the Family Service also deals with the mental health and the father program that they have now, the Single Father Program. Some of the homeless people, the food bank people go there to get vouchers. That's a huge program for our community.
And that's 24,000 at the recommendation.
Oh, my microphone, I'm sorry.
Huh?
They couldn't hear me. I'm sorry. The Family Service Center services not only, it's a mental health facility that's there, very successful. The homeless as well, food vouchers, hotel vouchers, when it gets cold for some of the families that are homeless. They also supply some type of food bank assistance. It's very, very successful. It reaches out to a lot of our people in our community.
I'd like to put them at 9,000. And I hear you on that, because the Church of the Redeemer does go out of its way to assist a lot of indigent population in our community. And too bad, I mean, I know we're limited, but I'd like to at least bring them up to 9,000. So maybe we could cut in between some of these particular areas here. All right, so at this point, I'm gonna share that. Okay, our legal counsel is willing to toss in $1,000. So that would bring him up to?
To nine.
To 9,000?
So you're doing 8,000, right? You're doing eight?
So that's what you did last year. You gave them the eight, and then, and then, legal counsel gave them the 1,000 as a donation?
To bring them to 80?
So it went up to 9,000 is what they got last year, right, Pastor Flores?
So your motion is to give them 8,000? That's what you're saying?
Well, yeah, let's bring them at the additional 100 bucks. And then the attorney's gonna toss in 1,000, right? All right, so that, that'll give them 9,000. So take the $100 from a-
For you is 8,000, yes.
Let's take the 100,000 from the, what's that? No.
No, 100. It's just 100.
Yeah, 100. Let's take the 100 from the- Yeah, Family Service, let's get $100 from them. So then, then, thank you, Legal Counsel. So that'll leave you at 9,000 for the, all right?
Mayor, I have a question for Shannon. On the graffiti removal, do we have any other funds for Public Works that could offset this if we, if we, you know, considered allocating more of the CDBG to community programs? Do we have city funds?
It's possible that we could use some special funds for removal on, you know, gas tax can be used for any removal of graffiti on the streets. I would just have to check with Rose if we have additional funding available there.
I will go back tomorrow and check, and let Shannon and you know.
And I suspect if we're talking a couple hundred or a couple thousand dollars, we could probably make that work. It's very small.
I mean, that, maybe that's something that we consider.
But the decision has to be made.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because there's a deadline, and I certainly, I'm afraid that the graffiti can, you know, we're not sure of the funding. I definitely don't want to see our community start, you know, being graffitied. And I really want to support the graffiti program. So I'm really, I would be cautious just to make sure that we do have funding.
I think what Shannon just said is that he does believe that there's 2,000 in the fund if we wanted, if we wanted to, you know, reduce that and put it towards a community program.
Okay. Which community program are you talking about? The Family Service Center?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at what could be available.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
Mayor, what I'd like to ask if from St. John's, we could go another 3,000, take some of the funding from the graffiti removal?
Um, St. John's? John's got, they got the full amount requested, so we couldn't give them more, because he said this is how much we need. So we can't give them more than what they actually requested. We got, they got the full total amount.
I know, but they, you know, I talk to them, and there's always a need that they have, or, you know, to do more services.
Can we talk about the legality of it, only, you know, because I always support St. John's as well, you know, as anybody knows, but the legality, because I know that we have to justify the funding with the program and an application, and they have to prove that there's a need in the community. Do we have that information so we can support it?
The main thing is, is that when we give them an increase, they have to actually tell us what that increase is going to be used for. It has to be a different service than what they're already doing. And at this point, we, we don't have that.
And at this point, we, we don't have that. They requested the 2150, I'm sorry, 2,150, and that's what they were approved at.
Oh, that's one of the largest churches in the city, and I believe that they'll let them come up with what they need if they don't think they can use the money, let them return it back.
Well, what they, what their concern was, was the paperwork that they're given to, to, because their programs are not presumed benefit, they're very strict requirements, and they said that they couldn't handle the additional funds before because people weren't willing for the programs that they offer for the CDBG funding. Some of it has to do with immigration, and a lot of people were very cautious to, are very concerned about giving them the documents needed for our program. So I mean, we could try to work with them, that's up to you, but then it would have to come back on the second meeting in May before we finalize it, and we could tell you if they said yes or no to that.
Can we do that?
We can try that.
Okay, we could try.
Okay, so, so that's the case, and Monica Garcia, I mean Vice Mayor Monica Garcia, requests can be fulfilled at that specific time then, right?
I'm sorry, for what?
Because you asked to see if there's additional fundings that we could utilize.
No, not additional funding. He's asking to increase the, um, St. John's amount.
So we're going to get it from which organization?
From the, um, from the graffiti removal.
Okay.
If I could just also mention too, because I am a little concerned because graffiti removal's already been reduced. And I did just talk to the chief, and he said there probably is a little bit of room in the Pride Platoon program. They could reduce that.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so then, how much can we take from Pride Platoon? Three?
Chief, do you mind speaking to the Pride Platoon? So are you saying that we could reduce the money from the Pride Platoon?
Absolutely. There's been a host of some legal issues of late with some police departments and their Pride Platoon use. And we want to make sure that we're in line with some of the new ways that we implement the program. So we're going to shift the way we do it. We've been working with legal counsel on how we operate the program and put it together. And that's one of the reasons we've put it on hold. So we haven't been able to use all the funds that were available, and that's the reason why it's on hold.
Well, what if we give them the 19,000 that we gave them last year, even though they're asking for 35? Even if the program is put on hold, that still brings it down a couple thousand.
Yeah, nearly, yeah, nearly $3,000.
It's 22,770. If we give them the 19,000 that they got last year, then we've got 2,770 to play with.
Yeah, Chief, I have one important question, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, 19, 20, 3,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chief, I have a question because, you know, you're saying right now we don't have a need, but this is based on the request made, right? The police department requested this funding, so I want to know why it was requested and we don't need it.
They were hoping for two Pride Platoon, but this might have been prior to the information that just came out that the chief has.
There's been some legal things that have come up of late, and like I said, we're working with legal counsel on them, on the way the program's been implemented in the past. And we're looking to make some changes, and that's one of the reasons it's been put on hold. Just so we can augment it, it's not that we've done away with the program. Our hopes is to do it and to run a couple of the platoons as we normally do, but we just need to change the way it's done that we've been doing it in the past.
So that would free up a few thousand there.
That works.
Yeah, that would free up, I don't, you know...
So then, can we get 3,000 of that for St. John's?
You know what?
Well, but we go back to, I would love to give everybody more money, but...
No, okay, so, okay, my request was...
It's explained about the paperwork, and I have also had conversations.
Okay, here's my, I mean...
Okay, so there's a limit, but go ahead, go ahead.
May I please finish? I'm sorry. I have had conversations with, in the past, not recently. The problem is, like Susie Ruelas explained, is in the paperwork. A lot of the people that come through these programs, the parenting program, which I'm familiar with because I sent a lot of families there, they have to have legal residency or citizenship documents. A lot of the families do not, or they don't want to give the information, which means, makes it impossible to fill out the proper paperwork that they have to in turn hand in to Susie to justify the monies that's being spent. It's not that, of course, they do a daily food bank, they do outreach to the homeless. I mean, we could go on and on for hours. But the problem is, is the paperwork, and that's what I've always argued about. Is there a way that we could get around that paperwork? But there is, and it's a government funding program.
My request is to go ahead and ask them. If they come back and give the money back, then that's up to them.
And Mayor, can we go ahead and put Church of the Redeemer at 10,000?
Yeah, I was just going to say, all right, so let's go and utilize that and leave Church of Redeemer at 10,000, what they were asking for originally.
And what about the East Anger Valley Coalition? I mean, they asked for 10,000. We're recommending 9,900. Should we do an additional 100 and put it at 10?
Yes, yes. We have that, Susan?
The homeless coalition to 10,000?
Yeah, yes, exactly, just 100.
Just 100 more.
And we took 100, right? Or we're not taking 100 from the Family Service Center anymore? Or not?
Uh, which one?
From the Family Service Center.
What did you want to do, add to it?
No, you had said that you were taking 100 from that for some reason.
Oh, yeah, that 100 went, well, we don't, well, that 100 went over to, to the Church of the Redeemer.
But the Church of the Redeemer's already getting 10.
We don't need that 100 because of the Pride Platoon.
Oh, got it, got it. We'll leave it at 10,000, yes.
For the Family Service Center, do you want to leave it at the 24, 24, 8?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
And then the graffiti removal at the 29, 700.
It sounds like, you know, the additional amount for Church of Redeemer and Coalition for the Homeless could come out of the Pride Platoon money.
Mm-hmm. That's why I'm saying it's almost $4,000 there. We could still give them the 19 to put in reserve, you know, once this is all, the legal realities are all settled.
I'm just looking, so are you saying you're taking all the funding away from Pride Platoon? Is that what I'm hearing?
The 19,000 that they asked for would still remain in there.
Yeah, but there's 3,000 difference, and we're adding two more to Church of the Redeemer, and then we're adding two more to the Church of St. John's, so the numbers are not adding up.
There's a thousand dollars that's been donated for the Church of the Redeemer.
Okay, for the sake of this conversation, quit not at this, because that's where I'm getting confused, because you keep adding it, and I get it. It's a donation, that's why I was confused. So thank you for that clarification.
I didn't understand that either. I thought that the 10,000 was coming from the CDBG.
So are we at 9,000?
9,000, and then the legal counsel will provide the $1,000.
All right, so it is 9,000. It confuses me, the donation, so it's just 9,000. No, that's all right.
All right, so are we good to go with everything?
Well, Mayor, can you, with St. John's, can you go swipe some money to put that way?
I'm sorry?
Or St. John's?
St. John's, we're going to put 3,000, and then they were...
Do you want the total 3,000 or 3,000 on top of the 21?
5,000.
You want the 5,000 total or 5,000?
Total.
5,000?
We're going to see if it adds up.
Yeah, I was going to say, can you please add that up?
Well, we can make it add up by, by taking that out of, a little bit out of the Pride Platoon and the graffiti removal.
But we already did that for the Church of the Redeemer. But we'll add it up right now, let's see.
Let's get, let's get the calculation going real quick.
With just the numbers that you've talked about right now, Mayor, you have an excess of 2,570 that you could add to St. John's without doing anything other than what you've done right now.
Oh, okay.
2,700 and what?
2,570.
Okay.
Which is...
Put them at the 5,000.
Oh, that's added to the 21, 50.
Oh, got it, got it.
It gets them very close.
What we're doing, what we're doing is taking the 3,770 that you've saved from the Pride program, you minus 1,200, because you gave Church of the Redeemer 1,100, and you gave homeless 100. So when you minus 3770, minus 1,200, you get 2,570. So that's what you have left over right now.
We're actually over by $4,000.
Oh, you said over?
Uh-oh.
Wait, whoa, whoa, whoa.
How could it be over if we took almost 3, almost?
I do something that I didn't get.
Oh, the Pride Platoon.
The Pride Platoon.
Yes, to 19.
Pride Platoon to 19, right.
Thank you, Maria.
208, that.
We're over 208?
If I may suggest 280 for, like, maybe the sports scholarship.
Oh, it's additional, surplus.
Oh, no, we are over.
We're over.
She added the 3,000 for St. John's.
But did you add the 3,000 for St. John's?
Yeah, St. John's had a total of 5,000.
But St. John's was supposed to be the 2570, wasn't it?
2150.
Oh, 2150. No, but the additional.
I think we're, I think we're okay if I could clarify what the request was. 9,000 for the Church of the Redeemer, which is an additional 1,100, an additional 100 for Coalition for the Homeless, which brings them to 10,000, an additional 2570 for St. John's is a total of 3770, and the 3770 can be taken out of the Pride Platoon, which puts them at the 19 that they had currently been allocated.
Yeah.
That's, okay?
All right, so are we good to go?
That's right.
We're good to go?
It's going us over 280, but I can figure it out.
No, I think we're, I think we're okay.
Okay, just, just meet up so we can get that going. All right, so at this point, if we're good to go, then we're, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for approval of the CDBG.
Second.
Any objections with the recommendations provided? Second, any objections?
Nope.
Seen and understood, move. All right, at this point, we'll go over, actually, that's it. The council members have any, any requests?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to ask Shannon Yancey if you provide a report on the MetroLink?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Dan Wall and I have been participating in various meetings and conference calls regarding the council's request to pursue a quiet zone for the railroad crossings for the MetroLink as it passes through Baldwin Park. As you know, it's according to federal law that they must blow the horn at each and every crossing. But there are some crossing improvements that can be done, and there's some hoops and paperwork that has to be gone through. It's not cheap. We've met with ACE, who's very experienced in these quiet zones. We've also talked to and met with MetroLink representatives from Congresswoman Napolitano's office. And also, we're going to be talking with the Federal Transportation Administration, and we'll be gathering that information and reporting back to city council regularly.
Thank you. Can you also look into any grants that are available for the transit-oriented district? And maybe even other railway crossings, and let us know?
Yes, yes, definitely. There are a number of grants that we're already starting to look at and gather information on safe routes to schools. Several of our crossings are near schools, so that would also be one that we would look into.
Thank you.
And just briefly, I would like to, I attended Supervisor Solisa's roundtable last Thursday. It was extremely informative. Not only did we get to meet some of her staff, which was very nice to be able to exchange phone numbers and to know who we can go to when we need something, or our staff can contact them. It was really informative. It was very nice getting together with other elected officials, and it was a wonderful morning, and she's going to be having those probably quarterly. Council members, I know it's a bad time for those of you that work early in the morning, but if you have a chance to attend any of the roundtables, I would say please do so because it is very, very informative.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Both Councilor Cruzbaca and I attended, and I'll tell you, the amount of information was incredible that's there. I mean, she parks and recs, public works, I mean, every department, the homeless organization that's there. And I definitely recommend that each and every one of you get an opportunity in the future to attend. All right, so at this point, I will move for a chairman of the city of Baldwin Park. That's my motion.
Second.
Objection seen and viva Baldwin Park. Good evening.